The other factor was our persistence in graduation rates. And these are, in some ways, lagging indicators. They are generally four or six years out. But they do tell a story if you get under the numbers to understand what is behind that story. The story they told us is that students were coming to us and fewer than 20% were actually graduating in four years. And fewer than, at the time, the numbers were better than this year, fewer than 45% were graduating in six years. Now, we could come up with all kinds of anecdotal reasons why that might be the case. But clearly, we are in the business of educating students and ensuring that they graduate with the degrees they need to be successful long-term in their work environment, but also in their lives, frankly, as members of a democracy. And then if we were only taking them here but not enabling them to move forward with the credential that will open doors for them and one that means something, that has the kind of rigor that we all embrace behind it, then we were falling short of our goals. Especially if we haven't spent some time to really look at what we're doing and whether there are factors that we could address. There are some factors that go beyond our walls and that we can't, we know that. But there are others that we can. And so we invited a group of faculty and staff under the leadership of Nicole and Peter. And I can't thank them enough. They were incredibly important in getting this initiative launched. And if we could just take a moment, because they're not presenting today, to thank them very much for the work they did getting this started. They convened the steering committee, they set the agenda, they developed the working groups, and they brought more of you in to participate in it. And we actually have close to 100 members of our campus community who participated. Clearly, the initiative around student success resonates with a great number. And it clearly resonates today because this is an incredible crowd. This shows that there is a genuine interest in making the right kind of change at our campus and learning what this task force has come up with through all of its efforts over this last year. It has been a year's work. It was based on significant data, and I want to thank Michael Benefi and Rick Riccardi for that. They were real scholars on this task force who provided support, data, analysis of that data, a comparison of that data to all of the various working groups and to the steering committee as a whole. So the recommendations that you will hear today are recommendations that are evidence-based, that are founded on data, which I'm sure that Stephen and Tracy will talk a little bit about in the course of their presentation. But it's also in comparison to best practices nationally. That we are not the only institution that has to be concerned about ensuring our students succeed. There's lots of literature on it in the academy today. It has become a particular interest of President Obama and his administration. He is talking, and I can't remember the last time we've had a president so explicit about this. You can disagree or agree with some of the details. But he has clearly put the completion agenda, that is, student success at colleges and universities across the country, very high on the national agenda. So our efforts in this regard, your efforts in this regard, could not have come at a more timely moment. And finally, I should say that there was some discussion at the time about where this would fit into our strategic planning process. And I will only say this, that it was clear to us then, and it remains clear to us now, that any strategic plan that our planning committee comes up with that doesn't somehow have student-centeredness at its heart is probably not the right strategic plan for this institution. And so I know that the Student Success Task Force chairs have already presented this to the steering committee of the strategic planning process. And many of these recommendations will be integrated into final recommendations from the strategic plan. Robert, I'm looking at you, and having, you know, actually not being on that officially, I'm just presuming that's the case. Because as I said, if you go back to our values and mission statement, we are a student-centered institution. We must be a student-centered institution. And that means that anything we can do to support student success, we need to do. There is an urgency, actually, to do it now. The last thing I want to say about just the leadership of this task force is it is a very important connection between academic affairs and student affairs. And both with our original co-chairs in Peter and Nicole and in our current co-chairs in Stephen Bries, Dean of Arts and Sciences, and Tracy Tyree, Vice President for Student Affairs, we have continued to ensure that partnership. I just came this morning from a board meeting for the Connecticut Campus Compact. I'm a member of that board now. And there, we talked a little bit about that nexus between student affairs and academic affairs and how student success really does involve both what we do in the classroom and how we really deliver our academic promise and how we support students outside of the classroom, which is so much of what student life and student affairs is interested in. And so it really is that partnership. And I think anything we do going forward will involve strengthening that partnership between academic and student affairs. And it truly is one of the real strengths of our institution is that we do have terrific leadership in both the student affairs and the academic affairs side, an incredible commitment by our academic leadership and our faculty to student success within and outside the classroom. And I believe also incredible support from our professional staff on the student affairs side and across the university, frankly, in finance and administration and enrollment management, you name it, that also says we want to be an institution that is supportive of everyone and certainly ensures that our students succeed. And so I will leave you with one point. I have to rush on now. It's the day of board meetings, the New Haven Promise Board meeting next. So I'm going to leave. I'm telling you that, not that you need to know my comings and goings necessarily, but because I don't want it to be misread that the president made a few comments and left on what was really an important day. It's because we all know that New Haven Promise also is a part of our access mission and is a commitment to our region and the success of our potential students and our current students. We are with UConn the largest, what do we say, registrants or, I didn't know the right word for it. But we have registered here the largest number of Promise students, only matched by UConn. So this is an important dimension for us. But let me leave you with this. The recommendations are significant, they are profound, they are transformative. Some of them will involve a financial investment or resource investment of some kind over time. Others of them simply mean rethinking what we do. They simply mean looking hard and not being afraid to make change. And I know that much of the debate that we will have probably after this presentation, and we'll start with some of you even as you're hearing it, it certainly has already occurred in the work groups and in the steering committee. It will continue on after the presentation is made. Because we really do want to ensure that every one of you and folks who aren't in here in this room today have a chance to provide input, reaction to the recommendations that you're going to hear. In order to do this right, we have to ensure that we have the broadest discussion on campus. I think we've done that with the representation on the steering committee and the work groups. But it's one thing to talk about the ideas and even to respond to the data. It's another thing to actually make the change. And I ask all of you, as you think about how we are going to really implement these recommendations, first, I pledge to you that we will make it a priority to implement these recommendations. These are recommendations that came from an incredible cross-section of the university. And it is our obligation, and I assured both Peter and Nicole, but also Stephen and Tracy when they took over the reins of the task force, that you have my commitment that we would do everything we can from a leadership perspective to support the recommendations. Because again, we're here for the good of our students. And we can, I'm really not interested in asking people to invest this kind of time and energy and thought and not deliver on a solution. The solutions and the implementation will not happen overnight, but some of it can happen fairly quickly. Some of it is already happening as we speak. But no, and again, I said this in my State of the University address at one point. I said that we all talk about the importance of change, but we also believe that it happens to everyone else. The truth is, it will be involving all of us. These are recommendations that embrace everything we do, and some more obviously than others. And I ask you not to have your first reaction be, wait a minute, we don't want to do that. We can't do it. It'll never work. Remember, many folks have thought about this and put that reaction aside. You may come back to it at some point, that's your right privilege. But I ask you at least initially to put it aside and look honestly at them and say, you know what, maybe we really can do this differently and better. And this is not going to undermine our commitment and values as an institution. It's not going to undermine our rigor. It's not going to undermine our autonomy and authority and all of that. But this is really a way to come together as a community for the purpose of what we're here to do. So I will stop, run down to, I'll stay for a couple of minutes, and then I'll run down to Wall Street. And let me turn it over now to Tracy and Stephen to offer you the presentation.
Thank you so much. There we go. Thank you so much, President Plaza. And we are thrilled to be here with you. And we are so appreciative that so many of you have come out on this kind of cold and blustery Monday afternoon. I'm just going to get us started really quickly. I'm Tracy Tyree. If we haven't met, Vice President for Student Affairs. You know Stephen Bries, our Dean of Arts and Sciences. We want to kind of get through the beginning quickly because we want to get to the meat of the matter and have enough time for some conversation afterward. So going to try not to rush too much, but keep moving. So President Plaza has outlined well sort of the structure of how we moved into this process. And it is important, we had nine subcommittees that worked very hard. And we really want to acknowledge those people because they are the work that we have the fortune to represent or to present to you today. So I'd like to start by asking the chairs of our nine subcommittees and Peter and Nicole, please stand and be recognized. If you served on one of the committees with one of these chairs, please stand with them. If you were on any one of our nine committees. Thank you. This was a year-long work and nothing insignificant by any of the members of our campus community. And you can see the names of some of them as I continue to speak. So we're really grateful. What we are going to present to you today is really our, Stephen and I took, every subcommittee did a report. And Stephen and I took those reports and sort of discerned six major themes. And then are presenting them to you as six major recommendations. They are unroll recommendations. Within each of those, there's all kinds of detail that will be in the report that you can read. You will see that the report itself is about 27 pages, the summary report. And then each subcommittee has a lengthy report with additional data and documentation to support it. And all of that will be made available to you. But today, we're going to really focus at a high level on those six major themes that will sort of will serve as the framework for our work.
But first, one more thanks for Monica and for Peter. Thank you so much, Rob. Monica, you're the co-chair.
So we'll move right on past that.
College of the University in the Business of Graduating Students. We involve ourselves in a lot of arts as well, as you know, the art of teaching, the art of learning. It's filled with wonderful and creative art. But if we did not graduate students, we would not be with it. We must graduate students, otherwise we will be out of business. So when we say the College of the University in the Art or the Business of Graduating Students, it simply means that we are going to be judged harshly sometimes by these two very, very important criteria. That is, persistence in time of graduation. You could argue with those criteria. You may not like those criteria. Those are federally recognized criteria. They are federally recognized and they are used by every agency that actually takes into account the quality of institutions. There's no way around it. We cannot avoid it. So therefore, persistence in time of graduation were the metrics that we use and the basis we use when we started looking towards what should we improve? What is the charge for the president? Persistence and time of graduation. So in very simplest terms, we have delivered our promise to graduate students timely with the appropriate education and degree. Every part of the task force leaned on that. Every subcommittee thought about that as they worked towards looking at the recommendations that you're going to see. So where are we now? So there's most recent data reflect four-year graduation rate of 17% and six-year graduation rate of 49%. There's good news and bad news about this. First of all, it's very low. That's the bad news. By national standards, it's very low. We've lost work with it. The good news is, it's better than it was. We used to be closer to 14 points something and 45. So we've come up a little bit in just the last couple of years. But it doesn't mean we don't have a lot of work to do. Because according to higher education, four-year graduation rates are 40.6. We are considerably behind this particular metric. And six-year graduation rate of 61.5%. And nationwide, for all four-year public institutions, 33.6 and 56%. We have work to do. So the task force that was convened by the president was timely. We know in following moments, we have to keep every student that we can. Now, I think it's important to point out, this metric is actually taken from the students who begin here as first-year freshmen, who begin their career here and then graduate either four, five, or six years later. It is the only metric that is actually plausible. You can't take transfer students into account. You cannot take graduate students into account. This is describing the undergraduate experience. This is the metric that is used nationwide is the one that we must use.
Our first recommendation is to advance a culture of student-centeredness. We know that student success is something highest priority. We see that in our mission and in our literature. And I believe that we believe that. It's not that we are just saying now that this is becoming important. But there are lots of ways in which we can improve upon how students understand, experience, and perceive whether we believe students are our first priority. And so to start with is to look at the culture. To look at how each and every one of us contribute in our unique way that when we encounter a student, that he or she knows that we think that that is what is most important about the work that we are doing on campus. And so I would like to talk about a few specific areas where we would like to put some energy and emphasis. And the first is in a sense of belonging. Do students feel like they matter? We know that many, if not the majority, of our students don't choose Southern as their first choice to go to college. And that's okay, because it doesn't really matter as much what they think when they come in as it matters once they get here. And so our concern really needs to be about whether we become their first choice for a place to pursue their higher education and remain their first choice until they realize that educational goal and get their degree. We, from our data, we know that responding affirmatively to the question, I expect that I will graduate from Southern, is a strong predictor of retention. So we need more of our students to expect that they will graduate from Southern very early in their experience and continue to believe that as they persist. Students need to believe that we offer them something they can't get somewhere else. So when they encounter a hurdle or a bump in the road, that they don't want to go somewhere else to have a different experience. They want to resolve that problem here because they are connected and engaged in a way that they can't imagine themselves as anything but an owl. And so that's part of our creating a sense of belonging, is that students really, they want to be here all of the time. We also know that some of our students feel marginalized. And we are working through our president's commission on climate and inclusion to think about our different populations of students, that we create a more inclusive community. But that is another area when it comes to belonging, is that for each and every part of ourselves that make us feel unique and special and important, that we are creating a place where all students feel welcome and comfortable. Our second area is student-centered service. And I really want to highlight some work that's already started here. If you've been a part of the SCSU and you working together initiative, raise your hand, please. Great. So lots of our community has begun this initiative. I'd like to read to you their values. They've identified six values integral to providing superlative customer service to enhance the student experience. Excuse me. Responsibility, accuracy, effectiveness, empowerment, integrity, and professionalism. Great values for all of us to have as we provide service to our students. And so we want to elevate the work, broaden the work that the SCSU and you working together team has begun and really make that a campus initiative around how we think about student service, how we deliver services to our students to make sure that that is top-notch and again, that it feels student-centered to them. Our third area is about employee orientation, training, and development. Every aspect of employment needs to embrace the notion of student-centeredness. Our advertisements for positions at any level, all positions, need to include something about how important students are in the work that we do. Our job descriptions, our interview processes, our evaluation processes, our reward systems. In many ways that we value our employees, we bring them into the culture. We onboard them, we orient them, and then we continue to train and develop. Needs to put some aspect of understanding the university as a place that's focused first and foremost on students into that process. That will help us build an even stronger sense of student-centeredness. University on campus, it is recommended in one of our reports that we hire a person who really is a place on campus. And I say hire, it doesn't have to be a new position, but needs to be a new component of work, where a person or multiple persons are really identified as the go-to place when a student has a problem, needs to navigate some aspect of the university, needs to resolve a dilemma, and really to direct and center our students in a place of problem-solving that they just don't have right now. So it's an important recommendation. And then finally, thinking about our hours of operation. We start classes at about 7:00 in the morning. We finish classes at 10:00 at night. We offer classes on the weekends. We can't possibly have every service and office open all of those times. But we need to better understand when we should be open, what we should be providing, who should be providing it. So the recommendation is really just to look at our hours of operation and see if we are reaching our students when they are most likely to be on campus and when they need us the most. So all of these things together to help us advance a culture of student-centeredness. The second major recommendation is around creating a student success center. Now, you can Google student success centers and you will find dozens, if not hundreds, might be too strong of a term, but there are lots and lots of campuses. This is the trend, if you will, right now. They don't all look alike. And so we will highlight the proposal to have a student success center. I want to talk about five major areas or themes that might fit into this area. A broader notion of a student success than you'll find on many college campuses. It creates a greater sense of inclusion for our students. It will provide a physical, ideally, provide a physical and virtual space where students can come and particularly get support for their academic experience. It will fall under shared leadership between academic and student affairs as you'll see many of the areas that we talk about already fall across that. So five primary areas of focus. The first is student transition support. We're really focusing on three primary areas of transition. The first year, so transitioning into the university. It's our hallmark. It's what we do well. We have been recognized for it. We just need to continue to do that well. As students continue to change, as we look at the unique characteristics of our student body, we need to continue to bring them in with all the support mechanisms that they need to be successful. But we need to build on that into the second year. We right now don't have a lot of emphasis on the second year, although it's a work in progress. We know the concept of the sophomore slot. But I think in many cases, colleges and universities around the country, the more emphasis you put on the first year, the harder the second year is because it feels like this big drop-off until our students get connected, well-connected, into their majors. And so really taking a look at that time of transition in the second year between being a new student and really being in upper-level classes and being engaged in their majors. The third area consists in transition support around transfer students. The university is doing some great new work to support transfer students. But to be candid, even in the short time I've been here, I have heard multiple times external to the university, we are not known for being transfer-friendly. We need to become known for being transfer-friendly. More and more of our students will come in through the community college because that's a more accessible place for them. And we need to have stronger and stronger partnerships with our community college neighbors. The data show that transfer students are more likely to graduate than native SCSU students. Even though we don't track their data in the same way, they are so important. They're about 40% of our new students right now. And I imagine that continuing to grow as we have more and more opportunity to bring them in. So under a student success center, we want more support for transfer students. The next theme in a student success center is around learning support. We need to invest more strongly in how we provide learning support to our students. Students respond to a variety of services that they're not aware of what we provide or their needs are not being met. Because we just frankly haven't invested as much as we need to invest in how to support their learning. And so we are encouraging, we also believe the synergy provided through a student success center would allow for learning support to happen in a more integral way with some of this other work. But we also need to grow and enhance what we currently provide and really look at some best practices around the country to be able to identify new opportunities. Disability support have fallen in the student success center. It is an area of strength for us right now, but I think can provide even stronger support to our students with that are identified with disabilities, if they are better connected to advising and transition and learning support. Oh, I went outboard. Oh, no. Yeah, I did. Sorry. Yeah, there it is. Academic interventions and enhancement. This area is really around some things we're currently doing and some things that we need to be doing better. I'd like to give you a few suggestions. It's really to help students who are failing to reach their potential or who need help after they hit some kind of roadblock. This might be under-prepared students, students that are in our student satisfactory academic progress, early morning interventions, academic probation support, withdrawal services, or other kinds of services that help in an intervention way. So I think that that's important. We're going to talk a little bit more in a minute about academic and career advising, but also as a natural synergy under a student success center to have all of this work together. We hope one day to be able to re-curve this space to allow all of these areas to be co-located in a physical presence. But we're encouraging that a starting place will be a virtual presence and then even stronger working relationships across these units and functional areas. It's a place we have some great relationships now, but we want to continue to build on that. So these are our areas to recommend under a comprehensive student success center.
In the student success centers, Tracy just said we would have the academic advising. We know from the data, and it doesn't take much to do a quick Google of how advising affects student success, you will find that it is not the magic bullet. It's not the only thing that affects student success. We know that if you change your advising, change nothing else, that you can make a marginal blip in your student success. But we also know that converse, the converse is not true. In other words, if you do nothing about advising, you will adversely affect student success. So while it's not a magic bullet, it must be rolled in as part of what we're doing to increase student success. There are so many interesting, for decades, we've been getting all sorts of interesting data on this. So if, when the student success report is finally rolled out this week and website is available, we'll make some of those resources available to you. So under this transforming academic advisor, we're hoping and recommending that the advising mission, the purpose, and policies are revisited in such that we are sure we're all on the same page, that no matter who is the advisor, that we all agree that these are the things that we're going to do within advising sessions. And those hopefully will come from the best practices used nationwide. But also, we know that on our, certainly on our campus right now, we have a lot of good advising. It might be considered spotty or uneven. It certainly doesn't have a systematic approach to it. So we know that between freshman advisors, which are almost always lean the one heavily at the university, especially ours, and between the good faculty advisors, that we're able to put together an advising system that is stronger and more unified. We need an advising structure that's got to support our first and second-year students. As Tracy was just mentioning, that our first-year students tend to be protective. This is normal, the first-year experience. If we protect our first-year students, we try to make sure we get to the second semester, the third semester. The second-year students are often left a little behind. The important piece of data is that if you make it to semester five with these students, they will graduate. So we need to pay more attention to our first and second year students. Start thinking about them in terms of being first and second year students as opposed to being first year students and then the rest of their educational career. If we make it to semester five, if we get them to come back to be a junior, they may graduate in four years, they may graduate in five years, they may graduate in six years, but they will graduate and they will become part of positive influence on our student success. We need some essential training for this first and second year advisors. Whatever structure we choose, and the report that's going to be rolled out, the final language report that we roll out later this week, we'll have some suggestions. But whatever we choose, we have to make certain that we offer a kind of training to ensure that the faculty and the staff that work with first and second year students are doing the best work they can for that specific group of students. First and second year students have very different concerns in many ways than the third and fourth year students. And we need to make certain that we're addressing those concerns from the word go. We also know that we need to offer some incentives. If you're going to become an expert in the first and second year experience, it's going to take time, it's going to take effort, it's going to take energy. And so incentives will need to be offered to some degree to help our faculty and staff be able to move forward and do what we need to do in the first and second years. Recommendation number four. We know that colleges and universities around the country have undergone some curricular creep, if you may call it. With the best intentions in mind, faculty and administrators have both considered that seat time is the most essential piece of learning. That the more classes, the more time we spend working with our students, and often the larger the curriculum becomes, the better the educational experience. Now, you could argue one way or the other, whether that's true or not. But we know that we've grown and grown and grown to the point where at least 12 of our programs on campus, at least 12, require so many classes that by the time students actually graduate, they have accumulated between 140 and 150 credits. I can't believe it more than 150. Now, does it require that? Not necessarily. But by the time they absolutely graduate, they're in 140 or 150 hours. So even though we do it very well intentioned, I believe the task force recommendation, and my personal belief as well, and I'll take ownership of this, that perhaps we have grown beyond the size of which is capable of graduating students timely. So the task force suggests to look at the liberal education program and ensure that we are working with the right number of credits. We know that 48, 50 hours is required by now, I saw the email recently that some of the sites have 51 because of the nature of the classes. So that's quite a number. The three writing intensive classes, which you may argue is or is not part of the rough education curriculum it is the university required. And so in not every case will students need to take nine additional hours, but there are some cases that then will come almost 59 hours. That's nearly half our overall 120 hour requirement in order to graduate. This is not necessarily meaning either the liberal education program were looked at again, that's recommendations, look at it again to ensure that we're teaching the right things, we're teaching it in a rigorous way and an efficient way. This does not mean that we will ever lower our rigor, but perhaps it needs to be looked at to ensure that we're not requiring too many credits, credit hours, and too much seat time for our students. The rest of the liberal education program, that was originally conceived some hundred years ago in the United States. It was conceived much more than that if you look at the arts and sciences curriculum. One of the oldest curriculum ever. It was originally conceived that one-third of the credits would take part in the liberal education program. One-third of the credits would take place in the major. And then you'd have time for about 20-hour minor and then maybe 20 hours with electives. That was the way it was conceived. Now, the world has changed since it was conceived. But we should revisit some of those settings to ensure that we are not overly worrying the program, the program's size and shape. We know for a fact that programs, some of them are accredited and have grown because of accreditation. Most of the credits that are required within programs, however, are programs that we have posed, that we have chosen to add to programs. So as we look at this model and how we're going to get students through in 120 hours, we need to look to ensure that we've not overly grown the programs within the major. We're also suggesting pedagogical innovation. We've been teaching pretty much the same way since 1900, 20 kids in a box. Now, there's nothing wrong with 20 kids in a box. You will always be at Southern working with great students in small classrooms. That's one of our hallmarks. I can't imagine we ever want to escape that. But there's lots of ways to define a classroom. And one of the subcommittees made some terrific suggestions. There's lots of ways that classroom can exist in the 21st century. And it's time, if we want to look to the future, if we want to be the university that will be competitive in 50 years, we need to start now with making out ways in which we can innovate pedagogy. Math this last fall has undergone, on the heels of pedagogical innovation, math this last fall has undergone a rigorous study and has created a report that would become part of the task force report. They are recommending a kind of innovation in how the math can be taught, especially at the lower levels. Something called math important. We wanted to include it in this particular report because it is an innovation. It's a streamlined way in order to help students in the education they need. It's competency based and self-paced. And we might be able to learn something from that, but we're recommending that to full implementation of this particular part of the program in order to help our students graduate. We also know that math and math scores are extremely important predictor of student success. So without students moving through the math areas quickly and efficiently, we are never going to get to higher student success rate. And then the writing program, the significant recommendation was made by the subcommittees to look at the writing program and see if we can improve it. We know for a fact that writing, just like math, is a strong predictor of student success. It's also a hallmark of all good colleges and universities, we graduate students that are excellent writers. We also know from the data that perhaps we are not doing as well as we should in this area. We have a decentralized writing program that has served us in some ways very well over the years. But perhaps now it's time to revisit that program and make some significant changes, make some significant investments in order to get our students writing better and therefore succeeding more. And then some policy adjustments. Sometimes it's low hanging fruit. We have some policy adjustments imposed by the administration, sometimes developed by faculty and staff, that over time has maybe put up some roadblocks that we can lower by simply changing policy. And so we hope that that is something we can do relatively quickly in some areas where policy shifts could actually open pathways for students to graduate timely. Our recommendation number five is refreshing the university branding marketing. We know that students go to universities often because they expect something special in the immediate future. It has been, I won't say absent at this university, because I have been here long enough to know the different ways we've marketed over the years. But I know that we haven't been marketing in a way which has been continuous and ongoing and constantly points out the things that we do so very rarely. If we start, if we begin this branding process, then there's an expectation of students, A, students will be attracted to go to a place where they are expecting a certain kind of experience. And then when we deliver on that certain kind of experience, they tell their friends and pretty soon we have, we're attracting more students. All students, when it's their first choice, when they go to a university of first choice, they tend to succeed more often. So what we want to do is create these expectations and be able to help our students know what they're going to get prior to coming. They come here primarily because of what we are, not just that we're one of the consu, and we are something specific within that consu. We don't suggest a narrow definition of a program or one school, but a broader definition of what it is that we offer and what is the experience that you can't get elsewhere easily, we're intentional about it, looking forward on it. And we'll make certain that as students come here, from the moment they come on campus, if they get that experience, that experience appears for this whole four years.
So our last recommendation is really around financing and affordability. Perhaps one of the most intuitive recommendations because we know that student indebtedness is a national conversation. And we have students with a lot of financial need, and we need to think about how we meet that need, where are there creative opportunities to think differently about that. So the recommendations here are fairly intuitive, I think. One is a focus around financial literacy. How do we help students be more informed and knowledgeable and intentional in how they think about financing their college degree? And even then, as they prepare for life after college, they understand the connections and are really more financially responsible as they prepare to be graduates and to kind of take the next phase of their life. We really want to take a look at, excuse me, how we award financial aid, where are the opportunities? There was a recommendation made that we use financial aid leveraging as a tool to award university funding. I think it is so important to think about how frequently, how much we can employ our students on campus. We know nationally that students that work on campus are more likely to persist, not only because it's a financial resource, but it's also a place of connection at the university. Somebody that invests in them, that's asking them how they're doing academically, and is giving them tools to prepare for the workforce. We also know nationally and at the university that students that work off-campus, particularly more than 15 hours a week are less likely to persist and graduate. Work is a barrier, off-campus work is a barrier to our students. And so we need to think about all kinds of different ways we can increase our student employment on campus. Then the last area under this is around just other costs to students, whether that's textbooks or meal plans or their on-campus experience. We need to think about even our fees that go along with our tuition. We need to think about how much it costs our students in total to be Southern students and look at ways we can reduce those costs or supplement those costs in any way, shape, or form. So there's more detail that I'm aware of at the time, and I don't think this one requires as much explanation because I think we're pretty aware of what our, how we need to continue to work to help our students be supported and successful in terms of financing their education. So as we wrap up and open the floor to questions or response reactions, conversation, there is an overarching recommendation that we encourage the president to designate a permanent body with broad representation, a new body, not a continuation of the same group. This is an implementation team that will help institutionalize student success, provide oversight for the implementation of these recommendations, identify future research that will help inform our work, and recommend new actions and activities that will keep student success as our top priority at the university. We will be posting all of the, all that we've talked about, all of the reports. We hope by the end, definitely by the end of the week, we hope before. But it will be in a website. It's just too much, it's too long to reproduce for this many people. So it will be available, and we will send an email out to the campus so you know when it's available and with a link so you can go right to it. But these are the highlights. So we ready to turn over Stephen? Here are six, a reminder, our six broad recommendations from the student success task force to the campus community. We are open to your response, questions, reactions. Yes, Michael?
I have a question regarding the recommendation number four. The last item on that list is policy shifts. So I was just wondering if you could give some examples of what the task force was thinking about when we identified policies that might be targeted to students.
Just one simple one that I could mention is that right now if you are, if a student wants to do a grade replacement, they have to apply for a grade replacement. Many institutions, if you just take class again, it's the exact class. You know that it will replace because it simply is the case. It wouldn't take the same class again, which would want to replace. That's a simple one. And there's a lot of others that are just, keep the student having to do undue paperwork and just makes, greases the skids, as it were, so that you're able to navigate the university. I guess this is an important point. We, all of us who spend a great time at universities, we know our culture. We know what a university culture is, we know what educational culture is. We forget that the 18-year-olds come here and they have never been at a university before. And so all of the things that seem so clear to us, all sorts of things, whether it's a grade replacement policy, grade appeal, you name it. There are so many things that are just seemingly second nature to us that students don't know anything of. So they have to learn everything, and they have to dig in. And they didn't do all the studies and all the work they do off-campus, they have to learn the policies. And so to make those policies easy to understand and make them work easily within the great universities, this one is already exists, even without some of the policies. I think that they could be the right, I think we do ourselves a service and we do a service to the students.
Yeah, I wanted to compliment the leadership in writing this report. I think a lot of us were here today because we had heard about very specific recommendations that we're all concerned about. And I like the word that it actually challenges us to use our creativity to come up with a solution. Because all of, particularly a lot of these academic issues are going to be up to the faculty, through the faculty bodies to make these recommendations. So that's one of the things that I particularly noticed. I also just wanted to say to folks that have, you know, a typical approach that any of us take about any academic issues, we want to go out and do research. So I particularly wanted to recommend two different places that we can go to to read a lot about this background, to the research, so we can start coming up with some ideas. One that he referenced was the acronym CCA, Complete College America. And that's been a part of, in the last couple of years, particularly the Obama administration has worked with national governors. And it seems to be something that both Republican and Democrat governors get on board, you know, go figure. So that is definitely some place to look for information. And the other, which is my personal favorite, is the acronym AACU, Association of American Colleges and Universities. And they really focus on, they don't exactly dismiss CCA, but they say we need to make sure that as we make changes, we have quality development. So they talk a lot about the different qualities that we want to make sure that we have in our academic program. So both of those websites have a lot of research, very evidence-based, very data-driven. And I think that the more that we are all educated about those, the better, the higher quality this conversation can be.
Thanks, Paulie. There will be data, some of the reports that Michael has done also that are posted. And I just want to say AACU is one of my favorite organizations. And so for all of my non-academic colleagues out there, I highly recommend that you take a look at their website too because they have, it's just a really impressive organization that looks at the institution as a whole. So thank you for those points, Paulie. Yes, Kim?
Hi, my name is Michelle. I'm actually from England and I'm a student. And I'm not feeling that helpful in the university, you know, more than just. But as far as I know, most of the people go to various programs in the U.S. And there's not much that I like to, you know, the U.S. people are not going to go to the UK. And as far as I know, it's quite a big industry and it's not very fair to people who are trying to do it in that amount of time or if they want to do it. But I'm just wondering how important it is to have the liberal education program and what benefit it has to students.
Oh, you're talking right in my wheelhouse. A liberal education program is a hallmark.
It's a little bit hard.
The question was, the question was, in the UK, the liberal education program is not the norm and that it is far more departmentally driven and that most students graduate in three years because there is no such thing as a liberal education program. I'll just say that in direct answer to you, that liberal education program is the heartbeat of many universities because it adds breadth of that to a variety of areas, including things like math and sciences and English and philosophy and writing, and many, many more in social sciences. The point is, is that without this, that this university would be shaped very differently. We are a university partly because we have a liberal education program that allows every student to take language and require every student to take these, some skill-based and some exploratory areas in order to help find what they actually want to do in their lives.
in order to help find what they actually want to do in their lives. And to let all of that wonderful knowledge inform what it is that they finally end up doing in their lives. I can tell you right now, I would not be standing right there if I were not a part of the liberal education program. I think a lot of people out here feel the same way about where they are in their lives and what the liberal education program is.
Thank you, Michelle. Carlos.
Yes, just a quick question, fellow people in education. Could we give the entire report electronically?
Well, it'll be on the web, so as a PDF, so you can download it, absolutely.
Very good.
Absolutely, yes.
And I'll leave the entire report, of the final report, that every one of the task force of subcommittees will also be published online, as well as other resources that we used in order to help come to our fighting.
Mike, Mike.
Yeah, I too want to thank the committee for a lot of work. And I know you two particularly have been doing a lot in the last few weeks and taking a lot of time. I think that contextualizing all of this report in the notion that we're in the business of graduating students, I think is a little incomplete. I think I would say we're in the business of educating and graduating students. That's the hard part. It's really easy to graduate students, and lots of schools out there show that. I think the difficulty is, you know, where we all are with it, whether you're in a classroom, or your staff, or your teacher, is getting students to learn it. And I would say that in some cases, paradoxically, I've been proud of helping students realize that they're not ready to be in school. And I think we all know that the students who come back to school from either left Southern, come back, left mother's school, come back, they're ready to learn and they're quick to graduation. I think we need to include in the metric of success if we help somebody realize they're not ready for college. Because when they do come back anyway, they're going to save a lot of money and all the people working with a lot of time. So I have two problems with the notion that we're in the business of graduating students. I think we're in the business of helping students realize what they need in education, and that may mean you need to come back later. And it may mean that you need to do certain things before you're ready to graduate. So I would just urge, when the report goes out, to contextualize that we're in the business of educating students and not graduating them. Because I think that puts us in the role of some schools out there that really are just about graduating students, and I think they give us some of the agenda we get because we're wondering why students aren't coming here. Well, it's easy to graduate from some schools. It's not necessarily easy to graduate from here, but I think if you graduate from here, you will be very well educated.
And perhaps what you highlighted, Mike, is what we do well versus what we need to do better. Because the group was charged initially to look at really the barriers to progress and graduation. And maybe that's really where the emphasis is because it's what we're not doing as well. We do know that we have students that are not prepared, are not ready, or just not committed yet to be college students here or somewhere else, probably. But it's just not the right time in their lives. And honestly, that's why I think we need to pay attention to community college students better because those are often students that have made different decisions and chosen a different pathway and also are more intentional and ready when they get here. But we also have a lot of students who could graduate that we're not helping get to that point. So it is a both and. We need to think about their education, but we also need to remove barriers. So if they are ready to graduate, we are not the reason that they're not.
And you can ask one other question. That forty percent rate for four-year public universities that are graduating, if you took UConn out there, what would the number be?
Bunch lower, I don't know.
Because I mean, I think UConn, of course, students, because I think if you just compare us with the other four, we're all pretty, because of the lack of resources, we're all having trouble with four years.
But I do think that depending on which year you look at, we're more often in the bottom one or two than we are the top one or two. We did look, I did look at those graduation rates, and we still don't compare at the top with what we look at at four years.
No, I understand that, but I'm sure it's not forty.
But you're right, no, absolutely.
I think if you say UConn out, which is kind of unfair to the resources they get, I think it would be a better comparison.
Sir, is that what you want to compare yourself against? Is that who we want to compare ourselves against? Is that, that's the question. I do, I mean, national surveys out there as well, and we're way below that. So I think that we need to sort of say, who do we want to be? Do we want to be the best of the four, or do we want to be good? You know, I think that's the question. Do you want, you know, do you want to lead, lead?
I would actually, that takes the money that people assume wants to get, so I mean, it does take resources.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Can you be a little bit more specific in terms of, this is under modified academic programs instructions, and you said there was internal and external data supporting the link between credit load requirement and tightening progress. Can you be a little bit more specific about the internal and the external data?
We'll have a couple, we'll have a couple of graphs later this week when it comes out on the website. I wish, I don't want to quote something inappropriately, but I will tell you that our, what I suggested earlier, the internal data, is it takes one-hundred-and-forty, one-hundred-and-fifty hours, that's what their accidents are actually taking in order to graduate in some of the programs. So that's the internal data that shows that instead of one-hundred-and-twenty, one-hundred-and-twenty-five, they're one-hundred-and-forty, one-hundred-and-fifty, which means necessarily they're going to take longer in order to graduate.
The table you'll see, that table you'll see will show every major and what it took if you came in as a first-year student, and what it took if you came in as a transfer student. I mean, there's a whole table that's brought that will give, not just the twelve, but will give it every academic.
Yeah, give it all, give it all, every.
So for internal data, you're looking at just actual credit loading in various programs?
We're looking at actual credits taken by the stus because that's what really matters. What do they actually take in order to get through? Not what they could take in a perfect world, if they never shifted their major, if they never did anything other than simply exactly the way it was planned in someone's mind before they began. But what did it take for those actual students at our university to get through?
And do you also have on that same table or somewhere else what the programs themselves are as well?
I don't know if that was included in the subcommittee report, but that is information that we should make available.
Yes.
If it's not available right now.
I think that's important, and I think, you know, kind of comparing the traps there. And what is the external data?
So the Complete College Agenda that Polly was talking about has a lot of data that says that this is a national problem and that we, that, in fact, I found some really interesting data on that about how much it's costing us nationally when all students across the country are taking too long to graduate.
This is not just our problem, but it is a problem that every university is beginning to address which we recognize is a critical creep, has indeed infused, the students' pocketbook and nothing else. But certainly our problem.
The nation's problem, in terms of tax implication, like the cost to taxpayers. And I encourage you to look at the reports, the work that Polly recommends, because there's some really interesting national data there.
Minnie? I have, on campus, we have a few programs assigned, a number of requirements required. But I think to present a more complete picture, we also need to consider student readiness when they come to college. That when we have a high percentage of students needing to take remedial work, that adds to the other reasons that it's really not, not really, the programs themselves are really not.
Sure, there absolutely is an issue around readiness and how that plays a factor. Does it necessarily get it to one-hundred-and-fifty degrees on a credit on average to take a completed degree?
We have the basically, more than, more than people.
It's a complex, there's no doubt, it's a complex equation to look at students' progress and what it means for them to be able to reach those goals, without a doubt. Yes, sir?
My question is, do we have any statistical data on how the high schools rank in the state? Because it seems to me that maybe we need to pour down where the root of the issue is. Sense remediation is such an important issue for your.
Absolutely, we don't have, I don't have that data, it's not part of our, the report. But it's critical that we look at, you know. Oh, the question is, is there data about how the high schools rank in order to sort of understand, who we're drawing from, what the issues are that are dealing with that?
Nicole.
Nicole, not Monica, but Nicole.
Yes. There actually is data, I mean, I don't know if Michael or Ben is, but we do have that. That may not have made it into a subcommittee report, but we did collect it as part of the early castings. It shows us from the high schools who is graduating from Southern at the highest rate. And actually, on that list, not as a high school goes, the highest rate of graduating, ten of students coming there graduating. And some of the ones at the lowest, or some of the private schools that you would actually be looking at higher. So we do have this somewhere, we'll judge it out when you guys maybe.
I think we've seen that. I was thinking you was asking about the performance of high schools. I don't know if we.
There's a national comparison there.
Right, we have where our students come from and how they perform, but I don't know that we have them compared to any kind of performance measures of those high schools to know, to know where those students, where students perform better in the state of Connecticut, if you will.
I know, from my perspective, when I talk to graduates in our program, in our discipline, that have gone on to teach high school locally, I don't know all that some of the resources they have available, so I mean, the question becomes one for the university.
Right, absolutely. I know we're sort of over our time, other comments or questions?
I would just say complicated, serious statistic. We got to remember that Connecticut is the lowest, it's the highest grade of students who go out of state, eighteen-year-olds who go out of state and go to college. So I think the high schools can be doing a great job. It doesn't mean we're getting those students. We have the highest in the nation, the highest grade of eighteen-year-olds go away, go out of school to go.
Higher than New Jersey. Seems like New Jersey is, everybody, okay, their highest absentee population is New Jersey.
So I think the high schools can do, they may do a very good job, but it doesn't mean that.
Right, we get those of the students coming. I mean, there are definitely lots of important realities that we need to understand and factor into and really, this is complex. Whether our students are, as they come in and how they progress and whether they graduate is really complex. And I think this report begins to give us lots of important places to look, things to think about, things that we can do. I would like to reiterate that every one of us has a responsibility, no matter what you do at this university, what your role is, that there is a place in which you can help students know that they matter and that we care about them and we want them to be successful in every essence of that term's success. And so I'm excited, I hope that there will be lots of energy, lots of conversations. We are just incorporating the last of the feedback from the committee chairs, and then we'll have that posted by the end of the week with all the other information that informs it. There will be all of the people who chaired and participated in the committees. I would ask that you remember, this is the university report, and Stephen and I can answer some questions, but if it's a question within a report, we would encourage you to go to that committee chair. Those committee chairs are committee members because that's who will have more of the expertise about how their recommendations than inform the summary report. And so it's, I love and hate this all at the same time because it's so cliche, but it takes the village, and we're the village, and we love our students, and we need them to know that, and we want them to understand that this is where they should pursue their higher education, and all, maybe the exceptions when they're not quite ready. And we want to be a part of that. So please let us know how you're interested in moving forward. We'll figure out kind of what the sustaining part is, the implementation team. This is long-term, we're going to be talking about this for a long time, so we're just beginning. But get to work and do some great stuff so we can, we can improve our student success at Southern.